Okay, it's five o'clock, we'll start. Reminder, speaking to your microphones, I will call the Village Board of Oregon to order of Monday, February 5th, 2024. Esther Clark, call a roll.
Higgins.
Here.
Kurt Schorfer.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here.
And Beshin is excused this evening.
Thank you. Item three, approval of January 22nd, 2024 Village Board Meeting Minutes. For a.
I'll make a motion.
Tim? Tom? Corrections, additions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Do we have any here for public comments? Thank you. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,237,658.48.
Aye, so move.
Jason? And Amanda? Questions, comments? Allyn?
I have two questions. First, on page 13, number 109, 19? Hold on, I have to find my page number here. Oh, sorry, I have it in my notes.
Sewer Capital?
Yeah. Can you just tell me a little bit about this? What this is and why it is the price that it is?
Uh, no, it's for Town and Country for.
I think it's meter.
Wait.
Meter.
Is it the meters?
It's the Midwest meter. Yeah, 10919, water meter base remote twist.
Yes, so that is.
Come on, baby.
It's less exciting than Jeff is making it sound. That is for our water meters, encoders, and transponders. So if you look down at where the water service comes into each of your homes, you'll see that there's a little device down there. And it does have a, um, a gauge on top of it. And then it has a transponder that transmits that information to either the cellular network or to a radio system that we pick up once a month. So you can see there's a lot of money in this. Every 20 years, the PSC does require us to change those meters out. And we have been, as we have been doing this, turning over all of our transponders from radio to cellular. So that's the part that's a lot of money. Because of COVID, we did get backed up somewhat off of that 20-year schedule that the PSC wants, for obvious reasons, and we're now trying to catch up. So where we would typically do about 200-meter changeouts in a year, for the last two years, we've been aiming closer to 400 to 500. And we did purchase 650 meters, slightly fewer transponders, for this year in the hopes of continuing to push that along. So that's why there's a big dollar amount there.
Okay. And then my second one is the next page. 13947 Fox Arneson Civic Campus Projects.
Yes, that's the Village Hall, another payment on, uh, prior, it's second to final payment on the Village Hall remodel. Fox Arneson was the contractor for this.
Okay.
Welcome.
Anybody else on vouchers? Tim?
Yeah, I had a couple. On page two, item number 6400, Amy Miller work.
That's for the, um, she's part of the Drug Free Community Grant. So the school district pays her wages and benefits, and then they send us an invoice, and we reimburse the school, and then we get reimbursed through the federal grant.
Okay. And then page 127, building inspection fees, $42,000?
Yes. Um, yeah, that's actually, uh, that's what we pay to Safebuilt for administering the, um, building permits for the village. It was a big month. It was a huge month, actually.
That was one month?
That was one month, and that was only 75%. We have a 25-75 split, so we retained 25%, and they retained 75%.
Actually, I think it was for three months, because the, the payments were getting mailed to the wrong address, and they notified us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, um, yeah, we just.
It was for three months?
Yeah, it was for three months.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Every once in a while, though, we will get a really, really large one that comes back through for, uh, like if it's an apartment complex or something like that, and there are 60 or 80 units, and there's an enormous fee for that.
Okay, anyone else on vouchers? Okay, we have a motion. Let's take it. It's a roll call vote.
Yes, we do, don't we? Peterson?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
And Kurt Schorfer.
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, uh, staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Uh, Jason? And Amanda? Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, reports of committees, items for discussion and/or possible action. A Public Safety Committee on Amendment to Issuance of Alcohol Beverage Operator's License Policy related to renewals.
Amanda, do you want me to do it, or do you want to do it?
Um, well, I can do it. It's fine. I mean, you know, unless you have.
You're the chair, so.
Prepared thing. It doesn't matter. Um, so there were a couple of things. The first was the updates that Derek Punch has made, just because, you know, we were not distinguishing between people who were reapplying for their licenses versus people who were applying for the first time. So those are pretty straightforward changes. And then, uh, I mean, that's what all these are, aren't they? Yeah.
And the only other thing is, is when it's a renewal, we put in the policy, this is a new policy for us. So when people renew a license, if they had a, uh, previous alcohol conviction on their previous license, that's still coming before the Public Safety Committee, because all alcohol violations need to be sent to the committee. So now we're only asking for new violations if the, from the new to the renewal, if that makes sense.
Okay. I would just clarify, if you don't mind, Amanda, Derek Punches happens to be the village attorney. Just, that's where those comments came from, in case anyone in the public wondered who Derek Punches might be. So we're looking for a motion to approve. Amanda? And Lynn? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in, sorry, Tim?
Well, it was more of a nitpick. I just felt that under 2B1, "The chief shall repair a report that contains the applicant's entire rec and conviction history, except it shall not include the following: the applicant's arrest record hi, history, except that the report shall include information." It just, is that as clear as we could have written that?
I think it's pretty clear. It helps, Jenny and I, um, had some conversations with Derek about it, so that we are only getting information that is relevant to, or substantially related to the licensed activity. So it's clear enough for us.
And that's the requirement under the law.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So you have a motion and a second?
Thank you, that's why I was saying, lost track. Okay, any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Candy. Item nine, new business items for discussion, possible action. A review Village Administrator Performance Evaluation.
You skipped 2404.
Pardon me? I skipped.
Eighty.
Sorry. That's why I couldn't find the motion. Unfinished business items for discussion, possible action. Orders number 2404, notice amending chapter one and chapter five of the Village Oregon Code of Orders related to committee, commission, and board composition and core requirements. There was a staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. There's a quite detailed memo from Martin with, uh, two options presented. I guess, I'm looking for a motion or, uh, questions, comments on those options. Tim?
I'll move to approve based on option one.
Okay. Amanda?
I'll second.
Okay. Tom, you have a hand up there?
I have a, just a comment, and the emphasis here is, this is so that our committees can continue to be functional during periods of time in transition as we, and roles are being filled. That's, it's not trying to reduce or eliminate or, or limit in any way, any community input or involvement. Um, it's important that we continue to get volunteers. We look for volunteers all the time, and that effort is a, an ongoing thing within the village volunteers and committees. I really support this amendment, because it keeps us functional and operating during those periods of time.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, anyone else? All right, we have a motion, second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, new business items for discussion, possible action. A review of Village Administrator Performance Evaluation Process. I do have a faint memory of, uh, doing this last year. Uh, I guess it's up to the board to decide how we might proceed with this. Do we have any language, uh, explaining how we did that last year?
I don't know if that was ever documented, other than minutes.
Just in the minutes.
Yeah, well, I, my recollection was, and someone may be better, is, I think Jenna coordinated this, and, uh, each of us filled out, um, the evaluation form. And then I think we met to discuss, did we, someone collate those, or?
Jenna did, but she also did the village staff as well.
Village staff, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, the, the form includes both department heads and all village board members.
I see.
I was, did have one question on that, was there, is there a valuation filled out by Martin in that process?
That's who, uh, we are evaluating.
That's who we're evaluating, but typically.
Like a self-evaluation.
When I've done evaluations before, there's always included a self-evaluation. And in fact, that drives the discussion frequently, much more than, than, uh, the comments.
No, there wasn't.
Okay. Well, certainly can add that.
I would, I would, I would like that.
Does Martin want that? I mean, personally, I'm just gonna. I'm gonna gently, gently push back a little, just because I personally hate those things. When your boss says, "How do you think you're doing?" It's like, super awkward. Does anybody like those? I mean, I, I understand your point about the guiding the discussion. I, I do, and I want to acknowledge that, but I'm wondering if we could find a, a different way to do that. I mean, let, let's talk about it, is all I'm saying. If anybody has ideas.
I guess my, the standard practice that I've dealt with in other evaluations in other organizations is, is everybody completes the same evaluation form, so that you can have a common platform for discussion.
So, so you're, are you, when you say self-evaluation, you, you're suggesting that Martin would fill out the same evaluation of his own performance?
Yes.
Uh, Lynn? Oh, okay, thank you. Please, Lynn.
Um, I think where Tom's coming from is that in evaluations, like, I just did this for my, um, organization, when there's a big variance between numbers of what you self-evaluate as via, or, as opposed to your supervisors, that helps drive a conversation. If I feel like I am exceedingly amazing at something, but yet my supervisor feels as if I am not, then we can start to see where those differences lie. Is that sort of where you're coming from?
It, it certainly would direct that conversation to those kinds of things. You know, it's, it's how am I, it's not only how do people perceive me, how do I perceive myself? And there's, it's a valuable tool in these evaluations, and it, and it really fosters the discussion.
Uh, Tim?
Martin, do you use that methodology with your director reports? Do they fill out a self eval?
So, that's a project that we're working on this year, is performance evaluations for, for village employees, because we're lacking a, a village-wide program right now. So right now, many evaluations that I've done have been informal over the last couple of years. But I do know that some, some departments have some self-evaluations, they use them just informally. I believe the police department actually has it as part of their actual policy. Possibly the library, too.
I always thought that was something that kind of happened in that interview, you know, when, when you talk with somebody.
You talk about, that's the leading, like, lead, leaded to the interview typically.
I'm not absolutely opposed. I mean, if, if everybody else feels like this is a good idea, that's fine.
So can I go through the process since, as the chair of the Finance Personnel Committee, I'm assuming they're going to be coming to me?
Please, yeah.
So everyone will submit both department heads.
If it's helpful, Candy had it pulled out from last year, but please go ahead, Tom.
Right, so. All right, so this is just a timeline.
So this is kind of the process we took last year. So if you wanted to work off of this, we could do that.
Yeah, but if you're prepared, Tom, please go ahead.
I, I didn't have anything prepared. I was just.
There already is a drafted evaluation form in the packet.
Yeah, so the Village Board approves the, the evaluation form. So, um, are there any suggested changes to the form? No? Okay, and then, uh, the chair will, uh, Tom will send the evaluation form to the department heads and board members. They'll set a deadline for returning those. Tom will compile reports. The Village Board will meet in close session, and then we'll be in close session with the, with the administrator.
And so there's no interim meeting with the Finance Personnel Committee beforehand?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think there's anything to preclude that, if you'd like to do that, but, um, I mean, it is, as chair, I think you can determine that. So, um, I, you know, this is only a, a reflection of what we did last year.
Okay.
If, if you feel like, uh, you'd like to do something different, please.
I'm, I'm fine with this process. I have, I have no problem. I just didn't know what it was, and I didn't have this.
Sure.
Document when I was looking.
Okay. Jason had a comment?
Yeah, so in terms of the form, I, I like the form, if we're going to have, uh, people self-evaluate, the narrative evaluation will need to be tweaked, um, a little bit for the person filling it out about themselves. So it makes, makes sense. I, 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 I do like, well, let me say this. I don't like doing my self-evaluation at work. I have to do it every year. And when I was a supervisor of a staff, everybody felt the same way, but, uh, valuable conversation came out of it. I just always dragged my feet because I didn't want to.
So, um, Amanda, please.
Yeah, um, I wanted to note, too, that, um, from these narrative evaluations, I thought that Jenna, last year, did a really cool thing. At the front of the evaluation, she did like a word cloud. Of the com, most common, because she had to enter all of those into, you know, all the written responses into something and, and, but it was neat to see the words that float to the top as people are talking about their interactions, uh, with, with Martin. It was fun to see. And I, I kind of recommend doing something like that. I think it would be interesting.
You don't know what tools she used for that, or?
I, I can, we can find out. I'll, I can ask her.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, it sounds like, you know, you're going to run with this, Tom, so, um, would you like, just, like, go ahead and send out our timeline to the board members? And, and I'm not asking you to do that right now, essentially.
Yeah, if we're approving the evaluation form tonight, I guess then it'd be, it looks like several weeks after that, you know?
Yeah, okay.
I can.
You comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Can I offer one more thing?
Please.
And Tom, if you need help, I would be more than happy to help you, so.
There you go.
I know where you are.
Yeah.
Okay, you need, uh, action on this?
Um, I think it would be good to have some sort of process.
Go back to this process, I think Tom is.
Going to create.
Tom's going to create that timeline?
Yeah. Right.
So then would we be approving the process that the Village Board members fill out, but know that that last page needs to be tweaked for the self-evaluation, correct? Okay.
Candy, could you send this to me in a document, something like that?
Absolutely, I can, yeah.
And, and that looks like there was tw- 20 days. She sent it out on the 7th, and then people had to have it back in, you know, just about three weeks.
Yeah. And I do know some of the dates were probably a little fuzzy, so don't quote these dates, but, yeah.
Just approximate timeline, follow.
Our, our objective would be to try to have it at the close session at the second meeting in March.
If that works for you, Tom. All right, so let's have a motion to approve this, uh, process. Uh, Jason? And, uh.
Second.
Uh, Tim? And further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, reports of village officer, reports of village officers, department heads, consultants. This is for information only. No action by the Village Board will be taken. Reports are in the meeting packet. A Village Administrator Report. Questions or comments for Martin? Hearing that. 10B, Senior Center Director Report, Transportation Services Pilot Program to the New Oregon Public Library for Older Adults in the Senior Center Service District. Rachel.
So we're really, really excited to have the opportunity to partner with Dane County and Transit Solutions to extend the transportation that we are able to offer to older adults. And the focus of transportation has always been primarily on food. So that means grocery shopping, lunches at the senior center, and visits to the food pantry. But with the conveniently located library being so close to the food pantry, we're able to work on, um, making rides available to people at the same day of the week that we're also looping out there to go to the food pantry. So we're, um, excited that we can make sure that people have access to the amazing, um, new space that is the new library, and we'll be looking forward to seeing how this all works, because shared ride services are different every single week, depending on who wants to ride and where they live, and where they need to go, and all those kinds of things.
And I just want to say a big thank you to Rachel and the Senior Center for going out of their way to make sure they're taking care of, um, needs of even, even just one person benefiting from it. It's worthwhile and important, so thank you, Rachel.
Of course, of course.
I think it's a great idea, and, and, uh, sure, a lot of people looking forward to it. Anyone else? Lynn?
I just wanted to reiterate my thanks. I know that transportation to these locations is just really crucial, and if there's anything that we as a board can do to highlight those services, feel free to reach out to us. We really appreciate it.
Point people in our direction. If you hear people, if you hear people who are struggling to get to the library, and they're 60-plus, just tell them to reach out, and we can figure it out with them.
Amanda?
And people who are not over 60, please reach out to either myself as the Transportation Committee, the Village Board, um, let us know, because that's information that we need to, uh, to help us, you know, help our constituents, you know, that we need to, if there's people who are struggling with that, I haven't heard from a single person yet. So you gotta, you gotta tell us. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, moving now, item 11, announcements and miscellaneous business announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings, and events and miscellaneous business. Village Board members provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. One reminder for upcoming community input, open house opportunities for the Senior Center Future Building Project Friday, February 23rd, from 2:00 PM to 3:30 PM for Senior Center users. Thursday, February 29th, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM for the general public. And Saturday, March 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM for the general public. All sessions located at the Senior Center, 219 Park Street. Anything to add?
Just, um, I mean, the Senior Center users are certainly welcome to come to the general public ones as well. We're just trying to break up the numbers a little bit, so come to what works on your schedule. And if you can't come to any of them and you want to offer input, let me know, and we'll get you a paper copy or an electronic copy.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Village Board Members, announcements, comments, communications. Owen? Okay.
Phil?
Pardon me? Oh, there you go, please.
Yep. Um, I just wanted to say, I misspoke before, that Safebuilt, that was for one month. That was for the month of December, but that was some big, um, contracts that are, or big projects that are starting, the one over here by Mulligan's, and I can't remember what the other one is. There was a couple of them I know that just came through recently.
Well, one was Regency, the Regency project on Oregon Parks, I believe.
Yeah.
North Point, North Point.
Yeah, that was a big month, so.
North Point.
North Point, yeah.
I think maybe the Habitat for Humanity Homes and, um, possibly the Adam Coyle. I think he got a, a second permit later in the year, so.
Yeah, because I mean, I think they started out with like the building permits, and then the electrical one permit came later, or something like that, so. Yeah, it was a big month.
Okay, Amanda?
Thank you for that. Uh, I also just want to clarify with something that I just said a little bit ago, because I realized it didn't sound quite right. When talking about transportation, when I, we haven't heard from anybody directly that needs it. Because I hear lots of people have come to me and said, "Oh, there's lots of people who need this transportation." But the people who actually need it have not contacted us. So that's what I mean by I haven't heard from a single person. I, we need to hear from them directly, because otherwise it's just hearsay. So please reach out if you yourself are having issues getting to the library, or anyplace else in town. Thank you.
Any else? Okay, thank you. Uh, item B, 11B, future agenda items. This items gives Village Board members, members the opportunity to place a topic on the village future agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Anyone?
And I, if anybody wants to know, I did pull up the building permit log, and there was six new single-family homes, too, in the CC Lane project. So there's where your amounts are from.
Okay. Item 12, adjournment. Jason? Amanda? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.